One.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for being here today. My name's Jacqueline O'Money. I'm one of the Education and Training Officers with Under One Roof. We're delighted to be here today in partnership with Aberdeen City Council to talk to you about the process of navigating common repairs in your tenement building. We're very happy that we have Claire here from the Private Sector Team at Aberdeen City Council, and Claire will be available at the end of our presentation today when we move over into the Q and A session to have a chat with you about any issues that you are having. So, let's get started today. I think just some basic housekeeping. We're going to be here for about an hour today. The format will be as I'll take you through a PowerPoint presentation. And my colleague Rebecca, who's our comms officer, will be here in the background. And Rebecca will post links to relevant pages on our website in the chat function. If you look at the top of your screen on Teams or at the side, depending on your device, you'll have the chat function. So the links will be posted in there. And you'll also see that there's a Q and A box. So as we go through the presentation and as we come to the end where we move over into the question and answer session, if you have any questions at all, then please do drop them into that Q and A box and we'll read them out at the end. I'm delighted to have so many of you here today. Please note that our session has been recorded today. So you will get a copy of the recording in your inbox within the next 24 to 48 hours. You'll also get a copy of the slide deck that I'm going to go through today. So if you, you know, don't worry too much about frantically taking notes about anything that I'm talking about today, you will get the time to go over the material at home when you're ready to do so. So let me get started by sharing my screen. Lovely. Okay. Great. So if you're here today and you're not familiar with who we are at Under One Roof, we are Scotland's only charity that provides free impartial information on repairs, maintenance and retrofit for tenement flat owner occupiers, landlords and housing professionals across Scotland. When we talk about tenements at Under One Roof, we're not just talking about our traditional blonde and redstone tenement buildings. We are talking about any building that has been split into two or more horizontally for residential accommodation. Now, that may be flats that are above shops. It could be ex-local authority four and a block properties. It could be converted villas that have been split up into flats, high-rise or low-rise multi-storey properties and modern developments. So if you're here today and you're thinking, I'm not really sure if I have a flat in a tenement building or is it really classed as being a tenement building? Then if it meets that definition, then we are here to help you. We can't help with any issues with regards to semi-detached, detached terrace or in modern townhouse properties. But anything that's classed as being a tenement, that's what we are here to help you with. So why is it important for you as an owner and a landlord to maintain and look after your building? Well, we want you to know what your responsibilities are as an owner of a property in a tenement building. All too often we see and speak to owners and landlords who are not really sure what exactly they are responsible for or they don't quite understand that when they bought their flat, they didn't just buy their flat, they also bought a share of the common areas as well. So we want you to know what your responsibilities are as an owner and to help you fulfil that. We want you to be aware of the condition of the building that your property is in. We know that home reports are not necessarily the most reliable documentation. More often than not, the roof area of the survey is caveated by saying there wasn't any access at height and it was done from street level, maybe with binoculars or a drone or something like that. Or it was just a visual inspection from ground level. So we want you to know ways that you can find out what the genuine condition is of your building. We want to reduce the need for reactive repairs and avoid high unexpected bills. We know that if you're here today and you've been an owner of a property in a tenement building for some time, you may be used to the fact that things just constantly happen on a reactionary basis and that there's not a great deal of planned maintenance. And, you know, that can lead to high bills. And if you're not budgeting for that, then obviously it's very difficult to be able to contribute to your share. We want you to have adequate building insurance for your property. We've had two catastrophic events this year. In Glasgow, we had a building collapse and in Perth, we had a fire in a building where there was sadly a fatality. And in both of those buildings, there were ongoing issues with insurance. So we want to make sure that owners have got an adequate level of building insurance cover for their property that includes their share of the common area. And why is it important for you to maintain and look after your building? Well, we want you to have regular communication with the other owners in the building. We know how difficult it is in this kind of modern day to keep in touch with people. But we want to be able to help you to find ways that you can connect with the other owners in your building and that you can have some form of regular communication. So we can, you know, get you to a point where you're discussing what's going on with the building and that you're planning for repair work and figuring out how things are going to be paid for. What are your maintenance responsibilities as an owner? Sometimes owners are a bit confused about what they have to do in terms of maintaining the building. And generally speaking, owners are collectively responsible for repairs and replacements within the building, for stair cleaning, for painting, other routine work, things like gutter cleaning, might be, you know, getting the roof checked on an annual basis. You'll be responsible for gardening. If you've got a communal back garden or front garden or both, then all of the owners have got a maintenance responsibility to look after that area. You're generally responsible for the day-to-day running of the tenement and the reinstatement of the building and also for the installation of insulation. A lot of times through our Ask an Expert service on our website, we get people contacting us with inquiries about installing insulation in their property or in the loft area of the building. And they're unsure of whether that's a personal responsibility to bear or if it's something that all of the owners should contribute towards. And it is clear in the Tenement Scotland Act that the installation of insulation in a building is a maintenance responsibility that all the owners share in common. If you don't already have a copy of your title deeds, we would strongly encourage you to get a copy. If you don't have them at home or from your solicitor already, then you can go onto the Registers of Scotland website. You can download a copy of your title deeds for a small fee. It's usually around £3.60. And that will let you know which parts of the building are commonly owned and what your responsibilities are for maintaining those common areas. It should specify what elements of the building are classed as individual to you and any mutual responsibilities. And it should also explain about the allocation or the split of costs for maintenance between owners. So again, if you're here today and you don't have a copy of your deeds or you've misplaced them, you're not sure where they are, please go onto Registers of Scotland and get a copy of your deeds. Pay that small fee and read the documentation so you can be clear on what your responsibilities are. What the deeds state are normally the default legal position. So it is important that you know what they contain. Types of repairs that you can be responsible for as an owner and landlord in a tenement property are individual. So normally in the deeds, when it talks about, and I think it's in section A, when it talks about the address of the property, it will explain what you're personally responsible for. And that generally tends to be what's inside the property, including things like internal walls, doors, windows. It will also specify in the deeds what you are responsible for in common, which are repairs to part of the building that all owners as a group are responsible for maintaining. And that includes things like the roof, external walls and foundations. Mutual repairs are repairs to parts of the building that are shared between some owners in a building or between neighbouring buildings. So when we talk about mutual repairs, that can include things like chimneys. So you might have a chimney on top of your building or on the building next door to you and all of you have got flus from your property leading up to that chimney. Your deeds will likely state that that's a mutual repair responsibility so that the costs are split between you and the other buildings that share that chimney. Likewise, you could share drainpipes with a neighbouring building or it might be that within your specific building, one half of the flats on the left side are responsible for the drainage pipes. So if there's eight flats, it would be four of them that are responsible for everything on the left side. And then on the right side, they're responsible for the drains on their side. You may have main door properties, a main door property in your building where they don't have access to the close-in common stair area. So again, that owner may not be responsible for maintaining those areas. Therefore, the remaining owners in the building will have a mutual responsibility for the main door and the common stair area. Now, title deeds aren't perfect. If you're here today and you've got experience of reading your title deeds or you've come across things in the past where you've had stumbling blocks, then you'll know that deeds aren't always imperfect. And that's where the Tenement Scotland Act 2004 steps in. Within the Tenement Scotland Act, there is the Tenement Management Scheme, which is effectively a model set of deed of conditions and is your default position to use that if your title deeds are silent on a specific issue or if they're unworkable in certain areas. The Tenement Management Scheme talks about scheme property, which are parts of the tenement that every owner should maintain. So if your deeds are unclear about areas that you need to maintain as an owner, then you should refer to the Tenement Management Scheme within the Tenement Scotland Act and have a look. But generally speaking, the ground on which the tenement is built upon, so the foundations and the soleum are a common repair responsibility. External walls, mutual gable walls that are shared with an adjoining building will be a common responsibility. The Tenement Management Scheme tells you how to come to agreements about maintenance. If it's not specified in your deeds, it explains what counts as maintenance and how costs are shared between owners. And the 2004 Act also changed a major aspect of the previous common law to confirm that the roof is a shared responsibility unless the title deed specifically say otherwise. It's one of the most common inquiries that we get at Under One Roof is about who is responsible for the roof, particularly with the misconception being that it's a top-floor flat owner that is responsible, when actually it's all of the owners in the building that are responsible for the roof. Just like an owner on the ground floor or in the basement isn't just responsible for anything that's happening with the foundations, it's all of the owners. So have a look at your title deeds, see what they say. If there's any gaps on things, then have a look at the Tenement Management Scheme within the Tenements Act to see what the position is. Generally speaking, decisions about common repair work can be made by a simple majority of owners unless your title deeds set a higher threshold. So generally speaking, if you've got six owners in your building, you're looking for four to agree to work to go ahead. That means you're achieving a majority and it's legally binding on all six owners. So have a think about it. Read your title deeds. Know what your position is in terms of what you're responsible for individually, in common with the other owners, and if there's any mutual repair responsibilities. Know what your share split of costs are and what areas of maintenance that you are responsible for. Now, when it comes to organising common repairs, we've got a kind of 10-step proper procedures model that we like to work off at Under One Roof. Of course, we're under absolutely no illusion that it's as simple as following all of these 10 steps, one after the other, and, you know, you complete the common repair process. We know that it's a lot more complicated than just these 10 steps. We know that it's very stressful, it's emotive, and it's a lot of hard work, particularly if you don't have a property factor and you're self-factoring. But generally speaking, it's the importance of following proper procedures that will help you if you need to take any further action further down the line. If you're not getting engagement from owners or people aren't paying, you need to be able to identify and prove that you have followed proper procedures. So first of all, you want to identify what the specific repair is. Now, it might be that, you know, you've got a leak coming from a neighbouring property. So you're trying to get in touch with the owner or the occupier of that property, if it's rented out, to determine if you can figure out what the source is within that property or if, you know, they're getting the leak that's coming through from above them. Is it something that's coming from the fabric of the building? So the roof, the walls, windows, something like that, drainage pipes or gutters? Or is it something that is individual within that flat? You know, is it a burst pipe from under a kitchen sink? Or, you know, a defective silicone sealer around a bath or shower that's causing a leak? Once you know what the repair issue is, then you want to be able to inform owners, the other owners in the building about that, to draw it to their attention so that you can make decisions on that. Rebecca will post a link in the chat to our page on informing owners where you'll find a customisable template letter that you can use to customise to the circumstances that you have and send that out to owners in the building to let them know about a repair issue. Next, you want to find contractors and get competitive quotes. We know that this is a challenging process in all areas across Scotland. You know, post-pandemic, cost of living crisis, Brexit. There's all sorts of contributory factors that have led to a shortage of contractors. And it is very difficult in some cases to find the right contractors to be able to do a job effectively. But what we would like you to do is find contractors, get competitive quotes and then get agreement from owners as to which contractor you want to appoint. Make arrangements for payment to be collected from owners. That might be just a deposit payment or it might be the full balance. It depends on the circumstances. You'll be signing a contract with a builder. The work will commence. Whoever it is that's signing the contract may be the person that's dealing with any issues that could arise throughout the, you know, the life cycle of the work going ahead. And then when it's complete, you will pay for the work per the terms of the contract. Now, as I say, I know that that's a simplistic model for, you know, organising common repairs. And I know that in the real world, it's a lot more challenging than that. So what are kind of some important points that we can consider in the common repairs process? Well, we want you to follow proper procedures, as we've discussed. It's important that you inform all owners in the building about repair issues, regardless of how relations are between owners in the building. You have got, there's a legal duty on owners. Everybody who owns a property in the building has to be informed about a repair issue. It might be that you want to go ahead and arrange a meeting. That could be in person, it could be, you know, it could be a video call or a Teams meeting or a Zoom, something like that. Depending on the nature of the repair, it may be something that you need to arrange a meeting to discuss it. However your communication goes when it comes to organising or organising a common repair and informing owners about it, everything that you do must be recorded in writing. So if you have any kind of meeting, there should be an agenda, minutes taken and a note of all the decisions that were taken. The reason that we recommend that you do that is because if an owner appeals against a decision that's been made to carry out a specific repair in a building, they can appeal on the basis that proper procedures have not been followed that have led to the owners making that decision. So if you haven't followed proper procedures and an owner appeals against it, if you can't demonstrate that you followed proper procedures, then that may void the decision that the owners have made. We know how difficult it is in this day and age to actually get in contact with owners. We know that just as, you know, things have moved on, you might have lost track of who the owners are within the building. Properties could have changed hands. It could be new owners within the building or there's inheritance situations. And you could be struggling to try and trace who all of the owners are. So in that situation, there are areas that you can explore to get help with that. You can look at Registers of Scotland to buy title deeds for properties to try and find out who the legal owner is. And that will give you their address at time of purchase, which is an avenue to explore for communication. If the property is rented out, then you can have a look on the Scottish Landlord Register. And you can see who the owner is and you'll get their contact details. It may be a letting agent, but at least it will give you the landlord's name and how to get in touch with them. You can speak to your council to see what assistance they can give you. And there's also the Scottish Empty Homes Partnership that exists as well, particularly if you feel or you're aware that there is a property within your building that nobody has occupied for a significant period of time. I had somebody contact me recently in a different part of Scotland. It was in Rainfordshire, I think. And they were dealing with a common repair issue. And there was a property that had been empty in their building for just over 20 years. They were really struggling to get in contact with the owner and to know what to do. Their empty homes officer at the council had exhausted all avenues and they got some additional support from the Scottish Empty Homes Partnership. So if you don't know who the owners are and you're struggling for various reasons, whatever the circumstances are, whether it's a rental property or a genuine empty home, there are places that you can go to get help. Remember, when it comes to the common repairs process, every flat is entitled to one vote. So if you've got eight properties in your building, then every property is entitled to a vote. Even if the property is jointly owned or there's multiple owners, one of those owners has got to make that vote on behalf of the flat. And unless the title deed says otherwise, it's a majority decision, a majority agreement that's required to progress with maintenance plans and that's binding on all owners. Okay? You know, you might have eight flats in your building, but for whatever reason, there's maybe one or two flats that just don't engage with you at all or don't engage with any of the other owners and they're never really included in anything. Just make sure that if you had to take something forward, to take some kind of enforcement action, which we'll come on to discuss shortly in the presentation, you need to be able to demonstrate that you follow proper procedures and by not allowing everybody to have a vote, that could hinder your ability to comply with proper procedures. Also remember that if you have a tied decision, so four out of eight owners agreeing to a piece of work, that's not a majority decision. So you'll have to look at going back to the drawing board to see if you can persuade some of the other owners to come, you know, on board to agree to this. And we'll talk to you through some ways that you potentially be able to do that in this presentation. Now, when we talk about improper procedures, we talk about you appointing contractors. And I spoke about the fact that I know that it is really difficult to find contractors who are operating in local areas. And it can be a struggle to, you know, to know who the right person is that you should be dealing with. There are various kind of websites that you can go on to, you know, to have a look if you've already found a contractor, you know, to see, well, are these the right people or not? Or, you know, are there any recommended contractors that are operating in our area? So your local authority will have a trusted trader scheme that you can look at. You can look at Scottish Trading Standards, Buy With Confidence and Trustmark are just some examples. You can also look on social media, you know, if somebody's been in touch with you and said, yeah, no, I can do that work for you. Have a look and see if they've got a social media page and have they got reviews on there? Or is there anything on TrustPilot or one of these other review sites that can give you a bit of confidence as to, you know, their ability to do the work and, you know, success rate and overall reviews that other owners have given them. Make sure when you're dealing with contractors as well, if you don't have a factor for your building and you are self-factoring, then you've got, depending on the nature of the work that needs to be carried out, you've got a wee bit more responsibility on your shoulders when it comes to appointing contractors. So you need to make sure that contractors have got public liability insurance and professional indemnity insurance. You need to make sure that they've got a health and safety policy, particularly if they're going to be working at height in your building. You need to consider what relevant experience that they've got in the work that you want to have done in the building. And do they offer a workmanship guarantee? Is there a warranty that comes with their work as well? Also consider the tender process, that the work that's required is clearly stated in the specification that they give you on a quote, that you've got at least two quotes from contractors so that you can discuss that with the other owners in the building and decide who you want to appoint. Try and make sure that your final selection decision is not based on price alone. I guess it's like the old thing of buy cheap, buy twice. If one quote is, you know, significantly less than the other, question as to why that is. Are they doing all of the work that you need them to do? What kind of guarantees can they provide for you on that work? And why are they significantly cheaper? And also agree about the project management of the specific piece of work. When is it going to start? How will they update you on progress? Will they be able to give you photographs? You know, will they have a drone if it's on the roof that can take before and after photographs or video footage? Is there, depending on the size of the piece of work, is there any contingency built in? And do you have a defined completion date? Dealing with contractors when you don't have a factor in place can be tricky. And I think that if you are here as an owner and you're the designated one in your building that's always carrying out the work, be very careful when you are signing a contract with a builder because that's your own personal signature that's going on there and it's your personal responsibility if things were to kind of go wrong during that contract process. So you need to make sure that you understand what it is that you're signing and that you have payment in advance from the other owners so that you're not left with a contractor asking you for the full payment and you don't have all the funds from the other owners. Now, we understand that a lot of people face issues where owners don't engage with them or maybe the owners are all engaged in the common repairs process, but then when it comes to paying for things, they don't want to pay for it or they can't afford to pay for it. Whatever circumstance that you're in with when it comes to organising common repairs and the difficulties that you're up against, there are options for enforcing repairs. And I think it's, you know, a good idea that you're aware of what the enforcement options are, in particular if you're currently stuck. So you have got, there's five areas that we're going to talk through just now. The first one is the duty to maintain. The duty to maintain is a powerful legal protection for parts of a building that provide support and shelter. So if you have got a roof repair that needs to be carried out, if the top-floor flat is consistently getting watered in every time it rains, it's causing internal damage to that flat and it's affecting the building, you know, it's not wind and watertight and you're not getting any engagement from the other owners or people are sticking their heel, you know, they're digging their heels in and they don't want to pay for repairs, then the roof is a vital part of your building to provide support and shelter. And that's where the duty to maintain can help you. So Rebecca will post a link to our page on the duty to maintain, which contains a template letter that you can customise to suit and send out to owners where they're not engaging with you. And you can seek to invoke the duty to maintain. You may feel that there is a repair that needs to be carried out that's an emergency and that can't wait for a scheme decision. So it can wait for all of the owners to get together, to have a chat about it, make a decision. If that's the case, then have a look at our page on emergency repairs and Rebecca will post a link to that in the chat. And that'll take you through the definitions of what an emergency repair is and it'll allow you to know if you can act within the parameters of an emergency or not. Next thing to talk about is the notice of potential liability. That's a notice that is lodged on the title deed for a property with Registers of Scotland. You may need a solicitor to do that on your behalf, but it's best to speak to registers of Scotland directly about it. But the notice of potential liability is particularly useful. If you have got a majority agreement to go ahead with a piece of work and the other owners who haven't agreed to it, you've got, you know, a feeling that maybe they might try to sell their property or, you know, they just will not engage with you whatsoever. Then the notice of potential liability is something that you can use for enforcement. It will sit on the title deed so that when the property is sold or if anything happens, then a solicitor would be notified that that notice of potential liability has been lodged and any funds that are due to be paid. Particularly if a property was sold while you're going through the repairs process and would be ring fenced by the solicitor and paid over. So do consider that you might be at a stage where you're collecting funds in or you've agreed to something and suddenly a flat's gone up for sale in the building. Then, you know, have a think about whether the notice of potential liability might be something that would work for you. You can get help from your council with missing shares schemes, work notices. And there's also repairing standard legislation for private landlords. The council can keep you right on your obligations as a private landlord to comply with the repairing standard. And, you know, talk you through how environmental health could potentially help you with a work notice on a building if there's, you know, something going on that's causing a significant issue, such as a leak from the roof or, you know, leaks between properties, something like that. Especially if it's a reoccurring issue, then environmental health may be able to help you. Similarly with missing shares, if there's an owner who can't pay for whatever reason, then the council may be able to assist you with that. Sometimes we get to a point where we've exhausted all opportunities or it may be that, you know, the council has exhausted their missing shares budget for the year and you really, honestly, you've got no wiggle room, there's nothing else that you can kind of do. You're completely stuck, you've got a vital repair that needs to be carried out. You're not getting the engagement or you haven't got all of the shares paid. What can you consider doing? Depending on the value of an individual owner's share, there is legal action that you can take. So say for example, there's a repair that needs to be carried out, there's six of you in the building, five have paid their share and the sixth owner hasn't. It may be that the five of you decide, okay, well, let's split that owner's share amongst us or one person said, well, I'll pay for it. Or, you know, it may be that you're like, look, this person is not complying with their maintenance responsibilities and we have to get this piece of work done. Then you can use the Simple Procedure Claims Action at the Sheriff Court. That replaced the functions of the Small Claims Court and it's a DIY process. It's designed for use without a solicitor. You can have a solicitor if you want, but it's not necessary. And again, Rebecca will post links to our pages on the Simple Procedure Claims Action on our website. We've got guides to talk you through how to apply for that and just general information on the claims action as a whole. So that's for claims up to the value of £5,000. So it might be that you say, well, look, I've paid this person's share of stair cleaning, I've paid this person's share of a roof repair or, you know, something like that and I want to get my money back. You would use the Simple Procedure Claims Action. If there is a significant piece of work and it's over the value of £5,000 and you would be using a different action, you would be using the ordinary cause and you would need a solicitor for that. So do know that there are legal options available to you to take legal action against an owner or owners if they are not complying with their maintenance obligations and the common repairs process. And we know that it is difficult for people to make that decision to go ahead with legal action, but particularly when it's causing issues within a property and affecting somebody's ability to have a warm, safe and comfortable home, then you may need to consider taking legal action. Owners' associations are something that we talk a lot about under One Roof. The Scottish Government is currently considering recommendations from the Scottish Law Commission and a draft bill to make owners' associations a mandatory requirement in Scotland. So right now, it's not a legal requirement that all buildings or tenement buildings have to have an owners' association. But in the near future, that is likely to become a legal requirement. So if you're here today and you don't have an owners' association, then I really would encourage you to have a think about forming one for your building. And Rebecca will post links in the chat to our pages on owners' associations. It's not a corporate body, it's just a formal arrangement between owners in a building, but it should have a constitution and an agreed set of rules and procedures. Again, on our website, we've got a customisable constitution document that you can use as a starter point for drawing yours together. And your owners' association, your document will talk about the rules, which are the purpose of the association, fee subscriptions for ongoing maintenance, planned maintenance and even for, you know, bigger repairs. It'll talk about office banners, who the chairperson, secretary and treasurer are and the structure and the frequency of the meetings that you'll have as a group of owners. It'll also talk you through the decision-making process for your building. So how you plan repairs and maintenance, maybe any criteria about choosing contractors or preferred contractors for certain work and payment arrangements and how you will fund repairs. Owners' associations, there's many advantages to them, but they can help owners to make speedier and better decisions. It will give leadership to the repairs process and encourages active participation. All too often, we meet with owners and landlords who are like Jacqueline, I'm absolutely sick of always being the person that has to organise this in our building. It's almost like a full-time job and I just don't want to do it anymore. If that's you and you're here today and you're thinking, gosh, I completely get that, I just don't want to do this anymore. It's always on my shoulders, then do consider speaking to the owners about forming an association and try and share that work out. Owners' associations also provide owners within the building a single source of contact and it works for better communication. So have a think about it. If you don't have an owners' association, whatever stage you're at with your kind of communication process between owners, do think about forming one, particularly before it becomes a legal requirement. Now, you may work with a property factor for your building, you may not, but I think it's a good idea for you to think about that and have your, you know, have that in your mind. Are you a fact, are you an owner or a landlord in a factored building or are you self factoring? And do you know what your responsibilities are if you are a self factoring building? But if you're working with a factor, then obviously the factor has been employed by the owners to manage the common parts of the building on their behalf. And property factors are governed by the Property Factors Act 2011. And there's a public register of property factors that's run by the Scottish Government and anyone applying to MB Registers as a property factor has got to meet the entry requirements, which includes a fit and proper person test. The Property Factors Act 2011 introduced a code of conduct that all factors have got to comply with and is the Housing and Property Chamber's first tier tribunal that's tasked with resolving issues between owners and property factors. It used to be the homeowners' housing panel, but that has been disbanded now and it comes under the first tier tribunal. That's the entry point to the legal system in Scotland for issues between owners and property factors. Property factors within the code of conduct have got to provide a written statement of service agreement to every owner in a building. And that written statement of service agreement acts as a contract and that will specify what the factor's authority to act as, what the services are that they will provide to you as owners, how they'll communicate and consult with you, what their financial and charging arrangements are, any declarations of interest that they've got with your specific building or development and how you end the arrangement with a factor. The wider code of conduct itself that factors have got to follow also includes a section on communication and consultation, financial obligations and debt recovery, common insurance, repairs and maintenance and complaints resolution. So factors, as I say, have got a legal duty to comply with the code of conduct as well as the terms of the written statement of service agreement. You might be here today and you're thinking to yourself, yes, Jacqueline, we've got a factor, but we're not happy with them or we don't really know what it is that they're doing or, you know, they're telling us that we need to go ahead with work that we don't particularly think that we have to do or, you know, or that we actually want to pay for. Then I would urge you to have a look at the written statement of service agreement in conjunction with your title deeds, so you know what you're responsible for and the wider code of conduct so that you can check to make sure that your factor is compliant and that they're, you know, they're not going off on a tangent and doing something against your wishes or that's, you know, that's not necessary. Similarly, you might be frustrated and thinking, well, look, I'm on the top floor, we've got a leak in the roof. Nobody has been like, I've reported it to the factor, I've not heard anything back from anybody, like, where do I go from here? Because this is ridiculous, it's raining and my property is being ruined and my tenant's not happy. Well, have a look at that written statement of service and see what the factor has said that they'll do for the repairs process. What are the timelines that they've put against notifying owners about repairs and having, you know, temporary repairs carried out in the event of an emergency? Can you, you know, marry up that the factor has complied with their, with what they're contracted to do within the wider code of conduct versus the service that you've received? If not, then you might want to consider making a formal complaint to your factor. But it's a good starting point to understand the role of the factor and what it is that they are here to do on your behalf as an owner or owners in the building by having a look at the written statement of service agreement and the code of conduct. You might be here and you're thinking, do you know what, we don't have a factor, nobody's doing anything in our building and, you know, we need to kind of figure out what we're doing here. Have a look at your title deeds and see if there's any mention of rules that you need to follow when it comes to appointing a factor. And the Scottish Government have got a new page on their website about appointing and dismissing factors, which hopefully Rebecca will be able to find and post in the chat so that you can have a look at that if you're thinking about appointing or dismissing a factor for your building. So where do we get started on all of this? I'm conscious of time here, so let me just kind of get through this so we can move on to the Q and A. So we want you to compile a list of all the owners in your building with their contact details and circulate that so that all owners know who each other are and how to get in touch with each other. It might be that that's just, you know, so that in the event of an emergency, we know who to contact. But it might also be that, you know, if there's leaks between properties or there's noise issues between properties and the owners know how to get in contact with that specific owner as well as all of the owners in the building. We'd like you to consider establishing an owners' association for your building before it becomes a mandatory legal requirement so that you can start to have better communication with the owners, a better decision-making process. And you can look at opening a bank account for the building so that you're regularly paying into that for maintenance work and repairs. You want to be able to check that all owners have got adequate building insurance. So when you're collating contact details for the owners, you can, under the Tenements Act, you are allowed to request site of every owner's building insurance document. So you can ask them to provide that. They can obviously redact out any sensitive personal information. But that will allow the owners to know that everybody has adequate insurance. If it's been a while since you've had a valuation survey carried out for insurance purposes in your building, i.e. five or more years, then we would encourage you to consider employing an RICS accredited building surveyor to carry out an insurance reinstatement valuation survey. Just so that you know that the reinstatement value on your policy is at the correct level so that should there be a catastrophic incident and your building has to be reinstated either partly or, you know, rebuilt, that everybody has got the right level of insurance cover to facilitate that. We'd like you to consider arranging a professional building survey, particularly if it's been five or more years since a professional survey was carried out so that you know the true condition of the building and that you've got a report to work off as to what is urgent and what you can plan for in the future. We'd like you to consider carrying out regular inspections of the common areas of the building. So when you're going in and out of the building, what's the condition of the main door? Is the lock or the door entry system still operational? Does it look like the downpipes? Are they a bit rusty? Do they need cleaned? Is there, you know, foliage growing out of the gutters? What's the situation? We'd recommend that your gutters are cleaned and your roof is checked on an annual basis, that you've got a planned maintenance schedule. That may be things just like jotting down in the owners' association about how often the stair cleaners come or, you know, a stair cleaning schedule, garden maintenance, gutter and roof cleaning, that type of thing. It's a good idea to start thinking about how you're going to save for future repairs and consider opening a maintenance account for your building if you don't have one already. If your building's factored, then we'd like you to liaise closely with the factor, making sure that they're carrying out site visits, that there's regular meetings. And if your building is self factored, then you can consider using the NovaVille Shared Repairs App to help you organise common repairs as well as establishing your owners' association so that it's not always fallen on the shoulders of the same one or two owners to constantly organise everything. So how can we help you under One Roof? If you're not familiar with our website, www.underonenroof.scot, then I would encourage you to go on to that. The website content comes from the original Tenement Handbook that our founders Annie Flint and John Gilbert wrote back in the nineties. It's been updated significantly since then, obviously as legislation has moved on. But we've got so many informative articles on everything to do with tenement management, maintenance and retrofit, including lots of architects' drawings that John did, very intricate on all kind of technical areas of repairs. So if you're thinking we've got a specific roof repair, maybe we've got, you know, a flat roof or, you know, a specific, like a slate roof, something like that or, you know, a specific type of gutter, then chances are that we have got a technical article on that that will talk you through how to maintain it, how to repair it, who's responsible for it and, you know, the things that you need to think about in the repairs process. If you're simply just kind of baffled by the whole thing or, you know, you've got a very contentious or ambiguous issue going on with the owners in the building and you're banging your head against the wall, you're getting nowhere and you think, I just don't know what to do here, then do consider using our inquiry service. When you go onto our website, you'll see the button to ask an expert. You can click on that and put in your contact details and the nature of your inquiry and it'll come to myself and my colleague Stephen. We'll have a look at it and one of us will get back to you within a few days with an reply and hopefully help you resolve the issue or, you know, signpost you to where to get more information. And when you need to seek professional help, that may be from a professional service such as an architect or a structural engineer or building surveyor or it may be that you need to seek independent legal advice from a solicitor. So we'll move on to the Q and A part of our event today. Any questions that you have that have come to mind, please input them in the Q and A box. But if you're thinking, gosh, that was a lot of information, I have jotted down some notes, but I want to have a wee listen to the recording or look at your slide deck later on, Jacqueline. Then my email address is on screen, so please do get in contact with me and let me know if you've got anything that I can help you with when it comes to looking after your building. So let me stop sharing my screen just now and we'll go back into the live area. Hi Rebecca, hi Claire.
Thank you very much for that presentation. That was fantastic, really informative, Jackie. Thank you.
Oh, you're so welcome, Claire. You're so welcome. Rebecca, shall I hand over to you to the Q and A?
Yeah, absolutely. So we've got several really good questions. First one from Harpree, which is quite relevant to Aberdeen where they have loads and loads of dormers in their buildings. What about a roof above a dormer? Is this also a common repair or is it the responsibility of the person who owns the dormer?
Yeah, gosh, great question. Dormers are typically a very great area in tenement law, Harpree. I think generally speaking, it tends to depend on when the dormer was added. If it is part of the original building, If it is part of the original building, then it's likely to be, it's likely to be common. If it was added, you know, later on, then there'll be aspects of the dormer that will be that will be individual to the top floor owner potentially and aspects that could be common. It's a very difficult question for me to give you a definitive answer on because obviously title deeds are different. It's not a blanket thing on dormers. It is a great area and it will depend on when the dormer was established, was built. So have have a look at your title deeds. We've got a page on dormers and skylights which Rebecca can can link to. And maybe if you've got a specific area of repair and you've maybe got a quote from a contractor or something, you could drop me an email and I can have a look at that in a bit more detail for you.
Great, thank you. I'm just putting that link to our page on Dormer Windows Who Pays. Next question is from another lady named Jacqueline. What can an owner do if another owner carries out work in a communal area of the garden which they have not asked us permission for nor even spoken to us about?
Okay. Yeah, that's a that's a difficult one, isn't it? Because if all of the owners are responsible for the garden, then yeah, it's just common courtesy that they're in touch with each other to say, well, I want to do something specific in the garden. Do I have your agreement to do that? I think it would depend exactly what work that they've done. Sometimes in communal gardens, the areas can be split up so that each property is responsible for like a small, their own small area of the garden. But where it's like maybe somebody's installed a greenhouse or, you know, they've put machinery or equipment or something else in, then it's definitely something that I would recommend that you speak to them about. And you explain to them that it's a, that the garden is an overall maintenance responsibility and that, you know, that the owners are not happy about whatever it is that's been done and figure out a way to rectify that. It might mean that you have to consider some kind of mediation service if it can't be resolved. And depending on what is done, you might need to seek support from environmental health at the council as well.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Our next question is from Susan. It says, our property is very old and I'm having difficulty understanding the title. Is there anyone other than a solicitor who can advise? The different flats have different responsibilities.
Yeah, that is a hard one, Susan, because a lot of title deeds, you know, were were written a very, very long time ago. They don't necessarily work in the in the modern world. And yeah, it can be hard to understand them. Generally speaking, we would always recommend that you seek independent legal advice from a solicitor. But it may be that you can speak to Citizens Advice, it may be that there is a law centre that that offers free legal advice that operates in your area and that you can go to. You may also want to speak to the council, but Claire, I'd be right in thinking you would probably refer to a solicitor as well, wouldn't you? Because without the appropriate legal training, none of us can really definitively interpret what deed state, isn't it? Yeah, I guess if if all of the deeds are are different, then the owners, you know, may have to refer to the Tenement Management Scheme. But I would be looking to see if Citizens Advice or a law centre that's operating in the area in the absence of being able to afford a solicitor to look at it for you might be something to do. Also something that I know that they do at Edinburgh University, and I don't know if they'll do this at Aberdeen Uni in the law department, is that sometimes they have law students who'll look over legal documents and title deeds for people and provide an interpretation for it. So it might also be worth contacting Aberdeen Uni as well to see if that's something that they could offer.
Great, thank you very much. Another question from Jacqueline about the definition of a tenement. Is a terrace granite house that's been split horizontally into two with communal walls, roof, solar and gardens a tenement under the two thousand and four Act?
Yeah, my understanding is that yes, it is because it's the the Act states it's split horizontally into two or more for residential accommodation. So in in that case, yes, it would be it would be classed as a tenement.
Great, thank you. That was a fairly straightforward one, I think. This one is less so, from Greg. I own a top floor flat that would benefit from the communal attic area being insulated to reduce heat loss within the flat. There are three top floor flats where one has insulated their flat footprint and the other two has not. I was going to insulate the attic across my flat footprint myself at my cost. My assumption is that insulating the attic will benefit my tenants, so it should be my cost. Are you saying that the insulation in the attic could slash should be shared by all eleven owners in the building? I will continue to look to finance myself as I'm not sure I understand asking payment for others where I will benefit.
Okay. Well, the Tenements Act is clear on that the installation of insulation is a maintenance responsibility that all owners should share. Regardless of where you are, obviously insulating the roof is going to help overall with your with energy efficiency. But yes, it should be something that's shared. If other owners have gone ahead and done that on an individual basis, then I can understand why you would feel it's a bit awkward to ask people to share the costs where others haven't. But the the law is clear that it is a common responsibility. It may be that you want to speak to Home Energy Scotland as a landlord to see if they can offer you any support with the with the installation of insulation. They might be able to help you with grants or funding that's available for landlords to install insulation. But generally speaking, it is a maintenance responsibility that should be shared amongst the owners.
Great, thank you. We've got a question from Tom. What if a majority cannot be formed but the work needs to be done?
Okay, you need, and the title deeds will normally state, and if they don't, then obviously you've got the Tenement Management Scheme that you need a majority to be able to go ahead with work. It depends on what the work is. If it's classed as an emergency or it's a duty to maintain issue, then you would look at enforcing the duty to maintain or going ahead as an emergency repair and looking to, you know, recoup the funds from owners using legal action potentially. But I think that particularly if it's something that's a duty to maintain issue and it's it needs to be done, then you can use the template letter, customise that to suit and send that out to people. And if that doesn't get you a positive response, then you would be looking to take further legal action potentially. But yes, you you should have your majority agreement in place to go ahead with work.
Thank you. We've got another question from Harpriet. What if there is a factoring company in place yet you're waiting for a repair to take place for months?
Okay, again, that goes back to what I was discussing in the presentation about knowing what the factor's written statement of service agreement says. And the factor should be explicit in that agreement as to their timescales for organising repair and maintenance work. So you can check with them as to why there's been a delay on things. Sometimes factors will come back and say, well, we've written out to the owners and we've not heard back from anybody. In that case, you might want to try and contact the owners yourself to let them know, look, we've got to get this piece of work done. The factor's been in touch, like, please can you engage with them? It might just be that the factor has, you know, they've not complied with their timescales and their policies and procedures for organising repairs. So you could deal with that as a complaint with the factor. But I think maybe we would need a wee bit more information with this this event today to know exactly the the timescales as to what's, you know, what's happened with the nature of the repair and the timescale. So maybe get in touch with me directly about that.
Great, thank you. We've got a question, which I think is maybe for Claire because it's about a specific controlled parking zone. Roland asks, my property is in a controlled parking zone. What can I advise potential contractors in terms of parking their vehicles, unloading, providing skips? Can the local authority assist us? This seems to be discouraging contractors.
Yeah, this is a greedy Buddhist fever law as well with regards to early said zones as well in the city. It can't provide an extra barrier into getting a contractor to do work. I would ask Roland to email the landlord registration email address directly and I can go back with advice with regards to if there's MD in the rules department, that the enforcement section that they can contact if they know when a piece of work's going to be carried out. If there is any exemptions, because I can't, I don't have the knowledge to to answer that at the moment, unfortunately. But if Roland wants to put his contact details to landlord registration, I can certainly find out for him.
Great, thank you. And we've just got one final question from M T Thompson who asks, some of the things you've spoken about, e.g. the council's missing share scheme, are they only accessible to owners' associations or to individuals? Could you outline the differences between enforcing repairs for associations and for individuals?
Okay, well, I mean, the associations is made up of the owners and there'll be a chairperson for that association. So if there's assistance that's required from one of the council schemes of assistance, then either an individual owner or a chairperson for an association can contact the council about that. I think that when it comes to taking legal action, because associations aren't they're not incorporated, then it still has to be on an individual basis. But that could be that, you know, there's somebody in the association, the chairperson or secretary puts together an application form or a letter or something like that and it's duplicated amongst all of the owners and then that is sent into the court if you were doing a simple procedure claim or if you were looking to enforce the duty to maintain, something like that. Councils will will let you know if they will deal with an owners' association or if they will only speak to one individual person. Claire, I don't know, how is Aberdeen? Will you guys quite happily speak to the chairperson or secretary of an owners' association? Or would you prefer to have that as just like, I am, you know, Mr. Thompson or Mrs. Thompson from whatever, One Union Street, and we've got an issue with blah blah that we need support with?
If there was one person from the block that was contacting us, we would need some sort of signature or written authorisation from other owners in the building as well, that it's a collective. But our private housing team could advise further on the actual process and we do have a missing shares page on our council website.
Yeah, okay, great, great.
Thank you. There's a couple of questions that have been posted in the chat, if you're
Okay.
Over time, but if you wanna
Yeah.
Go in, great. So just one more. Is there a time limit on a factor holding funds for a repair? For example, owners paid five thousand pounds upfront for installation of a new lift, yet the potential final bill is three thousand per property. The upfront payments were two years ago with lift replacement completed in February this year.
I think, yeah, Shona, I think you would need to look at their written statement of service agreement as well as the Code of Conduct to see about that. Factors have got designated client accounts to hold funds in. So I am not aware that there are, that there are any where there's repairs in progress, that there'll be huge time restrictions on them holding those funds. But obviously, you know, you, it's what's in their contract and in the Code of Conduct about that. I can't answer that. I can't answer that specifically. I'm sure lift repairs or replacements will take a significant period of time, especially if you've got to, you know, you're asking people for thousands of pounds. But if they're, you know, once the work's been completed, then if there's any difference that the factor is due to give back to you, then that should be reimbursed. But if they if they need more money, then they should be following their policies and procedures for organising repairs and asking you for those funds that way.
Great, thank you. And that is everything that's been posted in the Q and A in the chat.
Great, lovely. Thank you so much, everybody. I hope that you found that useful and informative. I hope that's kind of provoked some thought and that you'll all be in touch with me about any issues that you're having or anything that you just kind of want to discuss about what we've talked about today. Thank you so much, Claire, for being here and for hosting this event with us. Rebecca, thank you for all of your support. And yeah, we will be in contact with you with an email, with the recording and the slide deck from today's event and a feedback form. We'd be really grateful if you could take a few minutes to give us some feedback on that form about your experience today. And we hope to see you all again soon. Thank you so much and enjoy the rest of your day.
Fine, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.